This meeting to order, regular board meeting, Monday, September 12th, 2022, 6:00 P.M. Can I get a roll call?
Mr. Sterling?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mrs. Brogan?
Here.
Mrs. Riney?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Evelyn Meeks?
Here.
Chris Arguino, Recording Secretary.
Tariya Yarborough, Superintendent.
Shelley Wagner, Human Resources.
Michelle Erb, Curriculum and Instruction.
Josh Schramm, Business and Operations.
All right, I would like to turn it over to Erin Anderson. Hi, everybody. Stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with justice for all.
And now for our Parker Center pledge. I make Parker Center a better place. I am respectful. I am safe. I am ready to learn.
There you go.
Thank you. So we brought the Parker Center. All right. All right, friends.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Want to turn around?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye. Thank you.
Great job.
Awesome.
All right, while I wait for my computer. Josh didn't even start yet.
Yeah, leave it coming.
Oh, Josh.
I was afraid if you're here Wednesday, but you weren't.
All right, I need a motion for approval of the agenda.
Motion.
No student travel, 11A1, and consent item 12B.
Say that one more time.
I need a motion for the approval of the agenda with no student travel, 11A1, and consent item 12B.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mrs. Brogan?
Aye.
Mrs. Riney?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Meeks?
Aye.
I didn't see him.
No.
Oh, Mike, I'm sorry. Mike Sterling, I mean, Mr. Sterling.
Aye.
Okay, it's him. Sure.
All right, so I want to turn this over to Dr. Yarborough.
All right, our mission statement. The mission of the Harlem Consolidated School District as a vital part of the community is to help diverse learners realize their unlimited potential by providing an educational program dedicated to academic excellence and the development of strong character in a safe, respectful learning environment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion for approval of the board meeting minutes, April, August 22nd?
Motion.
2022.
Second.
Mrs. Brogan?
Upstee.
Mrs. Riney?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Meeks? Aye. Mr. Sterling?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
All right, turn it over to Jason Bloom. Nothing? Okay. Thank you. Do you have one comments from the community?
You ready?
Yep, you're good.
Hello, I'm Ruth Meisen. I'm a multicultural art teacher at Harlem Middle School. It came to my attention just recently, and that's why I was glad I had a chance to bring this up to you, that on our supply list for this school year, the required supplies, for some reason, Kleenex was left off that list. And so as an art teacher, I'm usually the last one to get any of those supplies, and I usually do a kind of an all-call to the teams and say, hey, if you have any Kleenex boxes, it'd be great to share with PE teachers, exploratory teachers. And that's when I found out that it was left off the list, that teachers had none, that teachers had been reaching out to parents and maybe got one box or none. And so this is an issue because we're in cold and flu season, and trust me, leaking body fluid is there every day, and all we can do to control our gag reflexes. And for me, like, I've already gone through three boxes of my own that I've brought in, but there needs to be a solution. And I felt bad today, as I was reaching out to Josh before, to come with a problem without presenting an idea for a solution. But if there's some way, maybe some of those ESSR funds or however we can get created to fill that need, this is only going to become more problematic, and it shouldn't be put on the burden for teachers to pick up that, especially when we're already picking up extras that we do for curriculum and things like that. Somehow we have to fill this gap, so I'm asking for your consideration in this matter, and hopefully we can do something about it real soon. All right, thank you so much for your time and consideration. Thank you.
Was it left off the list? Was it left off the list?
All right. Approval of the bills.
All right. Total payables this period were $1,270,199.30. There were void checks of $2,120.16. There have been three payrolls since the last meeting, or there's three payroll summaries on for this meeting, in a total of $9,229,210.61. For total expenditures of $10,499,409.91. Split off by fund, the education fund paid $9,038,054.67. The Torah fund paid $1,324.17. The operations and maintenance fund paid $521,963.33. The transportation fund paid $407,799.56. The capital projects fund paid $341,679.95. And the capital projects fund paid $179,588.23.
Josh, you said capital projects.
Did I say that twice? I heard that in my head, so I... All right, so for total expenditures again, it's $10,490,409.91. It's Monday, so are there any unanswered bill questions? Sorry about that.
Say the numbers were correct, that's the best.
They were so good, I wanted to repeat them.
Want to get a motion to approve the bills?
Motion.
Second.
Mrs. Riney?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Meeks? Aye. Mr. Sterling?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mrs. Brogan?
Aye.
All right, going over to communications and committee reports. Our next regular board meeting will be a public hearing at September 26th, 2022, at 6:00 P.M.
Public hearing will be five? It'll be at 5:40.
5:40?
Yeah.
We were starting at 5:40, we started board meeting at 6:00.
Right, it says public hearing at 6:00, though.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, so we're going to the public.
It kind of says both.
So public hearing at 5:40.
Meeting at 6:00.
Meeting at, to follow, at 6:00. Okay. And then our board self-evaluation work session with IASB, Representative Laura Martinez. I'm asking to reset this for October 18th or November 1st, if we could take a consensus on a date that works for everyone.
Just set a date.
I'd be in October.
October 18th is fine for me.
Larry, October 18th, would that work?
Yeah, I think I looked at it and said yes, didn't I?
I think he's the only one who replied, yeah.
No.
Okay, so we have consensus for October 18th.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Since Jill's not here, I'll take that part. The next policy committee meeting will be October 17th, 2022, at 6:00 P.M. And that ends my report. Evelyn Meeks?
Good evening, everyone. First, I would like to say I love the artwork. It makes me think of looking at a 60s movie. But it's really nice and eye-catching. So whoever, all the students that done it did an excellent job. I also, I attended a football game, I plan to attend more, looking forward to this season, plus looking forward to this school year also. And I want to thank you, Mrs. Meisen, is she still here?
Not sure.
For bringing it to our attention, you are absolutely right. Flu season is approaching, plus other viruses that may come along, and we definitely do need Kleenex, so I think, well, I know we will be trying to check and see what we can do to try to come with some type of solution to improve on that problem. The next Equity and Social Justice meeting is September 22nd at 4:00 at the Haxton. I have, I think that's all I had to report, but thank you, everybody. That's it.
Thank you. Trent Thompson?
All right, hello, everybody. Just great to see students back in doing the pledge, as always. It's fantastic, even with the little ones there. This one's going to be quite an easy one. I do not have a date for the next Business Services Committee meeting, which makes it look like I should actually know that, you took away my cheat sheet.
I'll give you the date.
All right. We will have the date to follow, however, the last meeting was just the previous Wednesday. And to make sure we have room for everyone that will attend, we'll make sure we get that date right away. But no, good as always, and that will conclude. We have the date, the 21st of October will be our date at 6:00 right here. September 26th? Oh, sorry, excuse me, 26th of September. Thank you.
Wait, what?
21st?
October 5th is the next date. Oh.
That's on the...
The 26th canceled?
For Business Services?
No, Board meeting.
No, the Business Services.
It's not Wednesday before the board meeting?
So it's only the first Wednesday, the first board meeting?
So do we have the official date?
October 5th.
October 5th?
We're heading on all cell to stay.
Hopefully that confusion does not prohibit people from coming. Yeah, come both, it'd be fun. All right. And that concludes my very confusing report. Thank you, guys.
Okay, also, Ms. Anderson, thank you for bringing the students in this evening. They're doing amazing. I knew I was forgetting something, and then I, when I looked around, it's, oh, here's the little people, it's so nice to see them come in, so thank you.
Their enthusiasm is always...
Oh, yeah, the kids crushed it.
Turn it over to Larry Smith.
Thank you, thank you very much, and I too have to chime in, I love the art, and Ms. Erb, would you tell me again the teacher that...
Mrs. Stoneham? Joanna Stoneham?
Joanna Stoneham, over at Loves Park School, it's wonderful, it was, Jen Stark is the one, I'm trying to find out if she's related to Tony Stark, but I really love the, I really love the artwork. The next Education Committee meeting is October 25th at 6:00, and of course, it will be a Halloween theme for that meeting. But all the business that we will be discussing will not be scary at all. So, thank you very much.
It's always a pleasure, Larry. Sue Bro.
All right, good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to say thank you to Mrs. Anderson and the Parker students. It's always great to have them in there, even though they're a little shy at first, but by the end, their voices were really picking up very well. I'd like to also thank Mrs. Meisen for the comments from the community. Yeah, Kleenex will be in short supply before long, I can imagine. Just if we can just double-check and make sure that it was only left off the middle school list and not grade schools, so we know where we're at with already...
Michael says, yeah.
Yeah, what's on that, pretty wonderful, the middle school.
Okay. And that ends my report.
Sharon Riney?
Oh, good evening, everyone.
Welcome back.
Great job at the Parker Pops, and I just wanted to say that I'm glad to be back. I was gone the month of August, I had surgery and recovering, and I really missed everybody. And what else was I going to say? I look forward to this coming year and everything that we have to ask to come, and that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, administrative reports, Dr. Michelle Erb.
Thank you. So this evening, I would like to ask for approval for our Discipline Improvement Plan. This plan was shared at the last Education Committee meeting. Back, some history here, back in 2020, we were informed that three years in a row, we were in the top 20% for suspension at that time. And we started digging into the data, and what we had seen is that our suspension data at the elementary level was very limited, that most of our, almost all of our suspensions came from the middle and the high school. So at that time, we really started digging into what interventions need to be put into place. In the 2021, or in the 2021 school year, we were not identified as being in the top 20%. As we know, last year, with students not being, with some students not being in school for over a year, there was quite a transition year. They went from having lots of freedoms, being at home, to now we had rules. We went from not really having to be around people that we may disagree with, to now we had to work on some conflict resolution. And the first part of the school year was a bit challenging in some cases, and through that, we were putting interventions in place constantly, trying to figure out how to support our students. When we looked at our data at the end of the year, we could see what grade improvement we made throughout, but it was difficult at the very beginning. What this plan shows is really some of those things that we have put in place, the main focus being on the social-emotional well-being of our students. Also working with some conflict resolution as we try to trans, as we try to get back to a regular school day. We utilize behavior contracts more, and we will continue to do that, making social-emotional learning really part of our in-school suspension process on how to make some better decisions. At the middle school, we are piloting a program that Mr. Hubert has brought forward in the past called Panoramic Ed, where we can really look at what are some of the social-emotional needs for our students. There are some videos and some lessons that can go along with that. We are also re-implementing the handover care program, so we know if students are, some things are going on on the outside, and kids are struggling, we don't know what has happened, but we know that there's some things that have happened, which law enforcement has been involved in, and we know that they just need a little additional support. And then we did retrain our PBIS teams so that we could kind of reboost our PBIS program, and so that is kind of have a new blood this year with PBIS. So those are all things that we started last year, kind of knowing that this was the trend, and we were trying to meet the needs of our students, and then we are just planning on digging a little bit deeper this year. Are there any questions?
I have one. You said you're, in the plan or the template?
Mm-hmm.
It says multiple referrals were written on the same student, by the same teacher, for the same disciplinary violation throughout the school year. Working with teachers to understand classroom management versus office referral. What's an example of that?
So a couple things could be that a student, let's say they had language toward staff, they walked out of the classroom, and so they had like three things that may have happened. And so when you record it, that could be, was known as an MDI, so basically a multiple offense, and so they get the action, or you could do it as three separates. So typically, we put it in as an MDI, showing that it's multiple, but we were also listing the individual so that we could see where we were in the cycle. So we're just going to document that different, so that it was, so it's not appearing maybe three times, it's just appearing once for the state, but yet we still have record of the fact that this has happened. The others for what may be in-class versus an out-of-class, well, if a student forgot something, not sending them to the office because they forgot something, that would be handled within the classroom.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we're still supporting the teachers by not saying, all right, hey, you've already given the kid multiple referrals, like, we're not going to do this.
No, that's not what that was referring to.
Yeah, it was more of a coding thing, it was a kind of question in the meetings. And that also that none of that context is lost, even.
When you just read it, unless, just to, just to make sure.
Right.
Cause it'll still be documented in a summary.
But there will still be stuff that cannot obviously be managed in the classroom. Or are we putting limitations on?
No.
No, no limitations.
There's no list on, okay.
I just got.
This is purely a coding thing would be, cause I always, yeah, there's concerns there.
That was, that was my one question.
Thank you. So I am asking for approval this evening. Yes, this is a state requirement as far as something we need to make sure that we get board approval.
Okay. All right, turning it over to Josh Arant.
All right, thank you. My first item today is a recommendation to approve a resolution declaring surplus property at Marquette, Roser, Machesney, Parker Center, and the high school. Questions, answers? My next item is a recommendation to approve a facility request. We have two. The first one is Tri M for a trunk and treat at the high school and Husky Baseball Club for practices. Any questions? Next is, the item says discussion of FY twenty three tentative budget. So just a reminder that the next meeting will have a public hearing, like we talked about, where we'll go over any changes from the tentative to the final budget. Um, we were gonna write in the S R three revenues and expenses. Um, and there will be a, a few additional differentials that I'll have to, to code into that budget. But, um, so it'll be fairly normal just what the changes are to the final budget. Questions? Next is a recommendation to approve an engagement letter with Chapman and Cutler LLP for bond counsel and disclosure counsel services related to the issuance of general obligation limited school bonds, which would be titled Series Two Thousand and Twenty Three. So this is bond counsel as part of the, the bond issuance. Any questions on that?
This is someone we've used before.
Every bond issuance. Yeah, they're great. Next is a, a recommendation to approve agreement with Argo Translation Inc. for interpretation services. So this is for interpretation and translation, uh, and so the limit of this process will be a request process through the Harlem Connect website, and that process already exists. And then Anna Louisa will evaluate those requests and kind of guide accordingly. We'll start with IEP translations, and I'm passing around a list of the district languages that we have. And then the ones highlighted in yellow are the ones we have IEPs with. So right now, our IEP software just codes English and Spanish. So, um, so we'll translate those. And then for parent teacher conferences, if we don't have a translator, we'll, they can use this service to call in and so those parents can communicate with our staff. And then Kurt had talked, asked Business Services about evaluating the effectiveness. So we will pull those reports by type and location and look at the dollar amounts as this kind of comes in, so there'll be something, um, new and see how that's going, where we're using those services at and what that cost has been. So, did I get most of that correct?
That is correct. We do have already interpreters that, um, I recruited as I've been in the district. But with the new requirement of our interpreters needing a, a certain certification, it is important that we are complying with this date and that. So, um, because we already have a process in place through the Harlem Connect where our teachers or administrators can submit trans, items that they need translated or if they need an interpreter for an IEP meeting, um, parent teacher conferences. So that directly goes to me, to my office. So then we can go ahead and arrange those interpreters we need and, um, the translations too.
That answers the question why we can't continue to use Google Translate. Well, it doesn't quite have that certification.
So, correct. So one of the things that I've done is tested out a lot of the translation, um, apps that are out there with Spanish, just to see how effective they are. Some of them, I mean, it's better to, you know, than nothing, but at the same time, it can cause a lot of confusion.
Oh, certainly.
Um, because just like in Spanish, just like in English, there are certain words that differentiate according to context. So for example, if you're making a referral in an IEP for further evaluation, if you translate it using Google Translate, it's now saying a medical referral. So there's a difference in context. You're either saying a medical referral or an academic referral, and the word changes. So I just want to make sure that we're not communicating information by error. I think having a, uh, an agreement with a company that is certified interpreter, have, they have certified interpreters and translators, that makes more sense. And because it is on demand for interpreting, it is the situation that we have. It would still, the request would still go through my office in order to engage and, and have accurate data, not accurate data on where we're utilizing the interpreter, not just like a free all or anything.
Yeah, it's a gatekeeper. So they're limiting who have access to the printer for lack of a better reference.
Correct.
And then the second, I guess, kind of similar to that point with the gatekeeping, we were talking about, you know, review policy or where it is to see if it's working or not. Do we have a tentative? Once we get to certain financial threshold, two grand, five grand, ten grand, where we also stop to look, check your gates, see where we're at, to make sure it's, this is expensive, but we have this kind of turnaround, or this is expensive, where do we, where do we go? Kind of where do we put that? I like, starting with the IEPs, I'd, I'd like having you as that gatekeeper, but I still want to know, since this is kind of a, different costs associated, right? Some are by word, some are by time, some are by things like that. Do we have a financial limit before we kind of stop and pause?
We did, um, allocate certain amount of funds, but of course, just like I keep jaying of the items that I translate or our office translates, that's the same thing that I'm going to keep with this. It's a threshold of how many items are actually being translated. Of course, things go in waves. There are certain times, like closer to report cards, these things tend, oh, a lot of translations come in. And for as far as IEPs, it's just a little bit sprinkled throughout. But if you look at the languages, there are some that we're still going to be able to support with our current translators, interpreters. But there are other languages that are called distant languages because they're very hard to find interpreters or translators.
I think if we, what if I bring back that summary in December and we can look at usage amounts and kind of?
That's what I'm looking for, right? It's like, I, I think there's a lot of promise for this. I just, and it has nothing to do with, with oversight on how we're using it. It's just general oversight going, okay, let's just make sure we know how much we're spending, since it's not, you know, we're approving ten grand, that'll last us a year. This could be ten grand using, we, again, pretty far out there examples, but just making sure we know kind of the grade that we're going to be doing. That's all.
If we bring it in December, that gives them a few months to get things going.
Yeah, 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 exactly.
And just do, just do a quick summary.
Any structure on this?
We, that's one thing, that's what we're, we're looking to approving. We're gonna have to set something saying, we're approving until this point to look. Or I would, was otherwise was hoping that today would be, we're approving, you know, all, you know, what? You, you have, you have cart launched to this, with up to ten grand or whatever it should start that to be.
Anna Louisa and I roughly estimated that it'd be about twenty thousand for the year.
Okay.
I mean, we're not starting until almost October now, so that might take a little bit off.
And that's, I mean, that's, that's the first number I've heard, which again, it, it's helpful just to give a context, cause we just, we're, we sit back here, we just don't know what we're looking at, like.
Sure.
I'm looking at the, the file, I'm like, I'm seeing, you know, the different amounts.
So let me, let me give you a little bit more information.
Okay.
So when it comes to our students with IEPs, about seventy percent of the students, I shouldn't say, the stu-, seventy percent of the students who speak another language or who live in a home where another language is spoken, most of them tend to be Spanish. So considering that, that, that typically is done through our office, our interpreters take care of that. So it's some of those singleton languages like Arabic or Vietnamese that we would need the IEP translated. So, um, I think it's, it's good to be able to see how, it would give us a clear picture of how much we, we might project for the next year if we see, okay, so how much is it till December? And seeing, projecting how much will it be till the end of the school year? Then that will have a clearer idea because nothing like this has existed before.
Oh, exactly, yeah.
We're starting new, and that's why I actually surveyed other districts that have a similar, um, student population, but they're not able to support the Spanish like we are here with my office. So, which is a kind of good thing because then we're able to translate the IEPs with embrace and then towards our, our interpreters that we currently have.
So their costs are generally higher using the same software because they're using Spanish, it's a majority of ours. Yeah, I get all of that. I think we just, we put some kind of numeric value that we just say at this point, we, let's target December unless we hit, for doing twenty grand for the year, if that's December, let's put ten grand on it in hopes that we're not going to hit it. It's just, just as a fail safe. It's just that if we hit, again, it's not going to happen, but let's say we hit ten grand in a week, we go, okay. Sure. What's going on? And then there's, there's been no question that has not been answered well. It just allows us at our spots to kind of put some constraints in making sure we're controlling this. That's all.
And along with that, I would recommend that we, uh, look at how many IEPs, uh, because one, one of the things that Anna Louisa shared with me is that that first time they go through with a language, they have to translate all of it, but then afterwards is just the comments, once that language has been translated. So then, so after you get through the expensive one, the others, then it's just the new comments.
So we're just translating all our documentation, we should use that. Okay, okay.
So we're gonna have more of an upfront cost with our languages.
And I think that's gonna be the important, the December part, is you can go, okay, we're, we're now, eighty percent of all our documentation has now been translated, hooray. That unless there's gonna be my small changes, now we're just handling with IEPs and parental meetings, and this is where we are financially. Again, it's, it's just from my point, it's just, just putting a, 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 just a precautionary thing in that, that hopefully we don't need to use. That's all.
Like you just went up to, uh, voting and when you get there, I'll tell you.
I'd be curious to see the actual contract on how they word that.
Correct.
How they word what part? The usage part of it, the, you know.
Just hourly based?
No, it's word.
Yeah.
Or, and then it's probably minute when they're doing the live interpretation.
So by minute when they're translating, interpreting, sorry.
But they have to have service fees, is there a minimum, maximum?
It's just how the man.
It's just a service, as needed service.
Yeah, if we don't use it, we don't pay anything, right?
Okay, all right, well then I'm.
Where some of the other ones, there are a charge.
Yes.
So there's no real contract. It's just an agreement to provide service. Okay, all right.
That's, that's all it is, is just, because I think it's, it's fantastic to have those, but anytime that there is, it's not a blank check, I mean, it's, it's probably not gonna happen. I just need to make sure that there's just something that we go, oh, how did that happen? Okay, it's worth the ten grand we did. We need to increase our budget. That's all.
So are you gonna add in a cost figure on the motion?
Yes, yeah, he's gonna add ten grand.
Okay.
Everyone else good with that?
Like ten grand until the end of the year, and at that point, we can approve what we need to. Cause at the same time, they don't want to get to, you get to the end of the year and then there is no fund, and we didn't use the ten grand.
When we review it in Business Services, we'll come up with the next recommendation for the rest of the year.
Again, I don't want to artificially like, you know, cut it off for anything I'm doing to protect it.
Sure.
Cool.
All right. My last item is a recommendation to approve an agreement with Second Step for online curriculum subscription for a cost of three thousand one hundred and ninety nine dollars, paid with Title Four funds, and this is for Harlem Middle School. And they've been using this for a while. Any questions on that? All right, next is a recommendation to approve an agreement with the ROE for Effective Teams Training for Harlem Middle School Staff for a cost of eleven thousand one hundred dollars, paid with Title Two and Harlem Middle School Professional Development Funds.
So I'll leave some other districts using this. Again, this is another one, just keep an eye and see how it does. This is not one training. It's multiple trains for the program.
Absolutely. Any questions on this one? My last item is a recommendation to approve an agreement with Alpha Controls for their Campus Optimizer to improve indoor air quality and lower utility costs for three hundred and one thousand two hundred dollars, paid with S R two funds. I'd like to make a note, uh, like this is contingent upon S R two approval. We're currently coding that in. Um, so this is a building automation system that uses our controls that looks at specific areas, weather, humidity, um, so it's gonna bring down the, um, the relative humidity into the proper zone. There's, their high end on the savings piece is about a hundred thousand dollars a year. They estimate that the ComEd reimbursement will be a hundred and twelve, a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. That's an estimate based on how ComEd views that, but that's what, that's what they think at this point. So if we can get a better air quality, save almost a hundred thousand dollars a year and get a reimbursement of a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, we felt like that was, that would be a pretty good, pretty good deal. So.
How long does it last?
So it's a, it's a soft, you know what I mean, like, is it a subscription? I was gonna ask if, based on that conversation occurred, if there's an annual, like, software amount in that. I don't, I haven't.
Date or?
Yeah.
They, they do the optimization that goes down, then we have to do it at three hundred thousand to replace it.
No, so, well, we, cause I talked to them about, we had a question about the warranty piece of it. And what they said is they spent that twelve months watching the utility bills to make sure that it's, it's actually working. I did talk, speak with, um, McLean School District in Normal, Illinois. They have thirty buildings. They had really positive things to say. They said it is intensive installing it because there's a lot of data points and you ha- you have to, like, when you have a rental, you put it into Google Calendar, it then pulls that calendar and knows that someone's in that space. And so there will be quite a few meetings relating.
It's a big computer that runs the HVAC system.
What?
It's a big computer running the HVAC system.
So there's gonna be weekly meetings. There'll also be a Google form for staff to give input about things they're seeing tweaks that need to be made in the system. Clean had really positive things to say about it. They said that one of their high schools went from six thousand a month in natural gas down to one thousand, and that the air quality, you could feel the difference. They had two, they had a couple of high schools, one that was on it, one that wasn't. He said you can tell the difference. So I know DeKalb has recently moved to it. I've played phone tag with her a couple of times. The preliminary indication that I had from Alpha was that three months in, they had sort of saved about thirty thousand dollars. But I still am going to touch base with hers. So I'll ask about that, that ongoing piece, because we're still doing contingent upon a grant, so if something pops up that's wonky, I'll either bring that back or halt that until, but I, I mean, that's not, they didn't put that in here. So if there's something else to that, then, then, yeah, I would need to address that. But, um, you know, if, if S R approves this, we get a hundred and eighteen thousand from ComEd, and it does what it's supposed to do, it would be a pretty big positive for us.
I think the financial parts are beneficial, but seeing those questions answered, like, how long do we expect this to work?
Sure.
So rebooting of that. Also, if a, like, if a air conditioner goes down, does it tell us? I don't know, things like that.
How about if there's something that pops up on that, I can bring that back if, if it?
Yeah, I have no problem at this point, you know, unless anyone else has any issues here. But I think that was the big thing, I think, as long as it's the software, it's covered. And it's sort of got a contingency because it has to be approved by S R.
This is just the high school?
I know, this is all, this is all buildings.
It's just, again, it sounds like it's just a software component, so, again, I expect a three hundred thousand dollar piece of software to cover all schools and last a long time.
And we have updated the headends by the boilers so that we can have these communications with these spaces.
And our, our headends that are connecting this, are they through Alpha or is it through a different system?
Alpha.
So Schneider makes the, the, they're, they're the ones that install the Schneider equipment here.
We have, we have Alpha Controls on most of the units we have right now.
Yeah, they service everything.
Install.
You can see that with the, the discount they gave us on the software.
Yeah. That's all I can play.
Yeah.
All right.
Anyone have any other questions? So between now and that approval, if anything pops up, I will bring it back. Otherwise, we'll roll with that. Is that good?
So do you wanna not take this to a vote, or you wanna wait to?
I, I, I think if you vote on it, with the caveat being if something pops up, I will reach out and we can, I can always bring it back. But if there's no other cost to it, then.
Contingent on the, no other.
Yeah, no other cost and consider that approval through SRT.
SRT approval, yeah.
I think the SRT will be the bigger one and then also just.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, all right.
I'll be okay with that.
Any other questions from them? That is my report.
Thank you. Dr. Shalb.
Good evening. Tonight I'm bringing forth the recommendation to approve the personnel agenda. We do not have an addendum tonight, so it's just the agenda. We have 26 employments, nine transfers, and 12 resignations on the agenda. That's it for me.
Thank you. Dr. Terrell Yargo.
All right, my report is even quicker and does not compare to Mr. Arant. So I have two full year requests here. The first one is a Freedom of Information Act request submitted by Ann Ma on August 26, requesting information on student suspensions, expulsions, and raw data. And the district request for a five day extension and subsequent response stated September 7. We should be fine with that. And then the second one is submitted by Alec Grover of AIG on August 16, requesting general employee information. And then the district's five day extension request and the district's subsequent response stated August 26. So we should be up to date with that one.
Thank you, sir. All right, moving on. Moving on to the consent agenda, can I get a motion in a second to approve the personal agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Meeks, aye. Mr. Sterling?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mrs. Brogan?
Aye.
Mrs. Riney?
Aye.
Can I get a motion in a second to approve facility requests?
Motion.
Second.
Mrs. Meeks, aye. Mr. Sterling?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mrs. Brogan?
Aye.
Mrs. Riney?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Moving on to action items. 13A, can I get a motion in a second to approve discipline improvement plan?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Sterling?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mrs. Brogan?
Aye.
Mrs. Riney?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Meeks, aye.
All right. 13B, can I get a motion to approve resolution declaring surplus property?
Motion. Second.
Brogan and Smith? Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mrs. Brogan?
Aye.
Mrs. Riney?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Meeks, aye. Mr. Sterling?
Aye.
13C, can I get a motion to approve engagement letter with Chapman and Cutler LLP for bond counsel and disclosure council services related to the issuance of general obligation limited school bonds, Series 2023?
Motion.
Second.
Mrs. Brogan?
Aye.
Mrs. Riney?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Meeks, aye. Mr. Sterling?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
13D, can I get a motion in a second to approve an agreement with Argos Translation Inc. for interpretation services not to exceed $10,000?
Motion.
Second.
Mrs. Riney?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Meeks, aye. Mr. Sterling?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mrs. Brogan?
Aye.
13E, can I get a motion to approve an agreement with Second Step for online curriculum subscription for a cost of $3,199?
Paid with Title V.
Second.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Meeks, aye. Mr. Sterling?
Title IV.
Mr. Sterling?
All right, wait, I have to go say that because I didn't send it the wrong way. Sorry, you took me off when you said aye. Can I get a motion to, a motion to, and then approve an agreement with the Second Step for online curriculum subscription for a cost of $3,199, paid with Title IV?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Meeks, aye. Mr. Sterling?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mrs. Brogan?
Aye.
Mrs. Riney?
Aye.
13F, can I get a motion to approve an agreement with the Regional Office of Education for effective teams training for Harlem Middle School staff for a cost of $11,100, paid with Title II and middle school professional development funds?
Motion.
Second. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Meeks, aye. Mr. Sterling?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mrs. Brogan?
Aye.
Mrs. Riney?
Aye.
All right. 13G, can I get a motion to approve an agreement with Alpha Controls for their campus optimizer to improve indoor air quality and lower utility costs for a cost of $301,200, paid with SRT2 funds on the condition that it is granted through the SRT2 funding and there's.
No additional annual costs.
There are no, no additional annual costs.
Motion.
Second.
Mrs. Meeks, aye. Mr. Sterling?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mrs. Brogan?
Aye.
Mrs. Riney?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Announcements and discussion?
Who, I, I didn't ask this. Mr. Who is doing the training through the regional office, do you know?
Chris Collins.